...of December 19th, we'd like to begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins, could you take role, please?
Yes, I will. Commissioner Roy?
I'm here.
Commissioner Summerfield is absent. Commissioner Mitchell is absent. Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins here. Commissioner Newsom?
Here.
Sheriff Person Fox?
Here.
We have Quorum of the Planning Commission. We also have President Township Planning Director Dave Campbell.
All right, and thank you. Next up, item four, approval of the meeting agenda.
I move to approve the Planning Commission agenda for December 19th, 2013.
With support.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Newsom, a second from Commissioner Grissom. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Next up, approval of the meeting minutes.
I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting from November 21st, 2013.
With support.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Hopkins, second from Commissioner Newsom. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Next up, item six, call to the public. Is there anyone that wishes to address any issues this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll close item six. Item seven, public hearing, we do not have one this evening, so we'll move right on to item eight A. This is Taco Bell Site Plan Application Number 520. And what I think we'll do is we'll turn it over to our planning director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. First item on the agenda tonight is a Site Plan Application Number 520 for a freestanding fast food restaurant with drive-through, a Taco Bell, within the Heartland Town Square Plan Development, just as a matter of overview and for the benefit of our audience perhaps. Heartland Town Square is the, what we call, Plan Development on the northeast corner of M-59 and US-23. It encompasses this large area here, the anchor development being the Meyer Store, which is here. As point of reference, this is the big boy here. The proposed Taco Bell is proposed within Outlet Number Nine of the Heartland Town Square Plan Development, which is right in this area here. When the entire Plan Development for Heartland Town Square was approved in 2008, there was an overall master plan for the development that showed, among other things, a major anchor tenant on this corner, which is Meyer, and a number of outlots along the M-59 frontage. In particular, on Outlet Number Nine was proposed a fast food drive-through restaurant. And that was approved as part of the Plan Development back in 2008. So now the applicant is coming forward to the Planning Commission tonight to get approval for that fast food drive-through restaurant, which is the Taco Bell. The Planning Department conducted a planning review of the application. There was also a review letter submitted by the Department of Public Works, the Fire Marshal for the Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority, and from the Township's Engineering Consultant, HRC. All those letters are within the Planning Commission's review packet, which I hope also made it to the applicants. The Planning Department's review letter is dated December 5th of 2013. Within that letter, the Planning Department does offer a recommendation to the Planning Commission, and that recommendation is for a recommendation of approval, subject to a number of items to be resolved at the meeting this evening. Unfortunately, there's a list of 13 items, and I remember one of my first bosses told me, "You never make a list of 13. You either get rid of one, or you make up a 14th, just so there's never 13." And I did not follow that rule. A lot of these items to be addressed are not necessarily deficiencies in the site plan per se. Some of them are considerations by the Planning Commission, who has the authority to make certain determinations per the zoning ordinance and per the Development Guide Book or Pattern Book that kind of guides the development within the Heartland Town Square. So one of the things we hope to cover tonight is the Planning Commission having an opportunity to consider and address those 13 issues as they consider whether or not to offer a recommendation of approval for the site plan to the Township Board. Keep in mind that the Township Board ultimately has the final approval authority for the site plan, with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. There's a, the Planning Department's review letter is, what, 11 pages? There's a number of items that we get into in some detail regarding lighting and landscaping and building design and things of that nature. And I do want to get to those issues later in tonight's meeting, but I think first, the best opportunity would be for the applicant to come forward and give their presentation and an overview of the project and the details of it.
Sounds great.
If you bear with me, we have some technology issues tonight, so are you going to want to use the, anything on the table yet?
I'll excuse right here.
Okay. If you do have anything on the table that you want to use that camera, let me know. I got to run in the back and flip a switch.
I hope you can hear me. I'm Eric Iverson. I'm with Design Inc., we're the engineers for the project. Sundance Think, the owner of the franchise, is excited, you know, with the coming to Heartland. They're already in Heartland, but they're going to, the plan is to relocate the store, the existing store that's on the other side of Island Road, to the Outlet Nine. And as you can see, I'll speak up here, but as you can see, our site plan, we've got kind of a tight set, but it's, you know, 150 feet wide almost along Island Road, 114 feet plus or minus along Heartland Square Drive. And we have, you know, a two-way entrance and exit right here. We've got all our parking on the west side of the building. The main entryway is right here. And then stacking lane is right here, the order line goes right there. And then we have a bypass lane around the building. We, whenever possible, cut the bypass lane, and I know it's not part of the ordinance at this point, but apparently it may be in the future. But probably, you know, David's substantial review, we appreciate your substantial input, David. I just want to go over each one of the points that David brought up. I'll do that after I explain all of it. We've got 22 parking spaces, kind of stacking spaces. Dumpster location is on the northeast corner of the site. And we have the bypass connection link to the outlets east and the west, that were in accordance with the approved planning. And the landscape plan, and what, you know, we have, the required street trees were planted by Ramco previously as part of the agreement. And then we are doing the remainder of the landscaping on the sides of the development, with the street trees and street, required number of trees and shrubs, and that's all these right here. And then we have, there's parking lot and open space landscaping, that's the remainder of the landscaping. We feel, Sundance is excited about this new look. Let me just put that up here. The, this is a nighttime photograph of the, of a similar building. Now, this building, in the photograph, is not 100% brick, but the building that we got proposed is, just a couple of clarifications. But, you know, this is a design that Taco Bell is going to. We've just finished one of these in Romulus, other than the slat wall is not complete yet. Just arrived late, I guess on Monday, and so they're in the process of installing that right now. Otherwise, we would have had photographs of that for you, so we apologize for that. But as you can see, the, you know, this is a nighttime photograph. It does have, you know, a hue of lavender, and it's actually, it's, there's lavender lot behind the slat, the slat wall here, and there's a backlit, so you can see that slight lavender hue, which gives, you think, a wonderful, you know, architectural feature of the building, and style of the building. And so we're excited about that, you know, becoming the heart of it. Now, I'm going to go over David's letter here. And I'll just go item by item, he'll got 13 items.
Yeah, could I interrupt you? That's probably where we're going to want to get into our whole discussion, because I think you're looking for a discussion and determination on 13 items, isn't it?
Yes.
So maybe what we'll do is, maybe I'll try and, if you don't mind, run that from here, and we'll inject the comments of our planner, the Planning Commission, you.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, that'd work great.
Let's just check them off one at a time, rather than do a presentation and come back. Do you have a suggestion?
Not only an observation or a note, the applicant did submit or bring with him this evening a packet that I passed out, that I hope you all have in front of you, that may, you know, be a hard copy of a lot of things we're going to talk about in terms of their responses. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that was in front of you as well.
Okay.
And I will be referring to that as.
Sure, absolutely. So, and if you have slides that can help us get through those particular points, the first one up is determination by the Planning Commission of whether the loading zone location proposed is acceptable. And Dave, why don't you give us a comment on that?
Sure. So bear with me while I get to the site plan that best demonstrates the loading zone. The applicant is proposing a loading zone to be in this area here. It's worth noting that there is a note on the plan that deliveries will only be received or accepted during non-business hours. The, if you look at the master plan for the Heartland Town Square Development, which showed a drive-through fast food restaurant of this general size, configuration, and location, the loading zone was proposed back here behind the drive-through, basically between the building and M-59. My presumption, at the risk of speaking for the applicant, is that having the loading zone here is more practical, because that, for all intents and purposes, is where the truck's going to park when he comes every morning to deliver the, to deliver the food. So the Planning Commission has the discretion to move the loading zone, or to keep it where it was shown on the development plan, understanding that the guy driving the truck is probably going to park wherever's best for him regardless. It is worth noting, too, that the service door for the loading and unzoning is right here on the side of the building.
Thoughts? I don't have a problem with it either.
No, I think it's good. Good plan.
Okay. So I guess you have a consensus, and we agree that the proposed location is good.
Okay, thank you.
Item two is determination by the Planning Commission of whether the dumpster enclosure location as proposed is acceptable. Dave?
There is a provision in the Pattern Book that guides development within Heartland Town Square, and I'm trying to find it as I flip to it, but it essentially says that dumpster pads are generally supposed to be located west of the westernmost driveway of any site. And so in this instance, the dumpster location is going east of the driveway. From an operational standpoint, Mr. Iverson could perhaps speak to why, in Taco Bell's mind, it works best on this side as opposed to on the west side. But ultimately, it would be the Planning Commission making the determination of whether that's a reasonable, a reasonable request.
Yeah, the reason that it's located where it is, as you, if we, I did try to locate it on the west property line, because that, it specifically says that's where it prefers. If you look at the site, the depth of the site on the west property line is shorter from here to here than it is from here to there. And with a restaurant with a drive-through window, the traffic always has to go in counterclockwise direction. So we are saddled with that. So the parking has to be over on that side. We don't want to have people crossing the stacking lane to get into the store. And so, so it forces the building to be over here, parking to be over there. If I put the dumpster over here, it shortens up three spaces of parking right there. And then I can't get parking over in that corner over there. So I would lose, so if I put the dumpster here, I would lose three spaces right out of this side. Now, what we could do is add those three spaces over here and lose two spaces in the stacking. Those are choices. So it's either on the inside of the lot, or go with fewer parking or end or stacking. We could do a combination.
Any comments?
My only question is, if Dave has a thought on why it would have been spelled out, I mean, do they just like the idea of all the dumpsters being on the west of the driveways?
That's the best I could come up with, is having a uniformity of the location of the dumpsters and the monument signs, kind of a consistency there across the various developments within the overall development.
If I could make a comment, if you look in the packet that I handed out, if you go back, there's a landscape, and it's about three or four sheets back. There's the overall landscape plan that was the preliminary plan that was approved with the PD, and then I have a blow-up of that with the dumpster enclosures and the landscaping across our frontage highlighted. That, if you look, the dumpster on Outlet Number 10 is not on that west property line. And so they didn't even follow that guideline 100% in the approved landscape plan. And so I just, and so, and we, I'm not sure why they wanted it that way. I don't, I think if you look at it, there's no, if we really look at the traffic sort of coming from this direction right here, and actually, you won't be looking into the dumpster, you'll be looking at the side walls and that wall. That's our opinion.
I think it looks better there, and I think it functions better there, meaning your proposal.
I agree.
I would support moving it.
Keeping it as a drawing? Right, I agree.
Okay, so we have a consensus to leave it as you have it proposed.
Okay.
Item three, determination by the Planning Commission of whether the illumination levels as proposed are acceptable, particularly at shared commercial property lines. Dave?
So sheet LT of the site plan is the photometric plan for the proposed development. Photometric plan shows what the light levels are at various points throughout the development, given the lighting that's proposed. And what the current zoning ordinance calls for is a lighting level not to exceed more than one foot candle along any shared property line that's shared with a non-residential use. So essentially, along all these property lines, the lighting level that's being generated by the Taco Bell site is not to exceed one foot candle. And along the, let me make sure I have this right, along the north and the south, they're slightly over, they're at 1.2 for the foot candles. And then along the east property line, if I zoom in a little bit, you'll notice that they get up in the, over the twos, in some cases, I want to say the threes, presumably because they have higher lighting levels along the drive-through. And if you can imagine going through the drive-through at night, you do need those higher light levels, you know, when folks are making change and double-checking their orders and for safety reasons. So it may be difficult for them, given the constraints of the site, to adequately illuminate the drive-through area, but still get the drop-off to one or less foot candles along this east property line. It might also be worth considering, for the Planning Commission, that as these various sites develop within Heartland Town Square, we might want to ask ourselves, does it make sense for all of these lighting levels along what are, for all intents and purposes, property lines that, from a visual standpoint to your average customer, they don't know that there's a property line there? So if every applicant has to drop their light levels down to one, just so the next guy can then bring them up, is that some, is that a requirement that meets the intent of the lighting section of the zoning ordinance? So in addition to those property line light levels, there's a couple of things to do with lighting that the Planning Commission needs to consider. In addition to the excess in lighting levels along three of the four property lines, there's also, the current zoning ordinance requires that at no point should the lighting levels exceed 10-foot candles. And again, because of the drive-through operation, the lighting levels as proposed along the drive-through, they're up around 15 and 1/2 foot candles, but just along the drive-through operation, again, presumably to assist in security and, again, making change and double-checking orders and those sorts of things that we are all familiar with when we go through the And perhaps, okay, two more things. One is the proposed wall-mounted lights, which are along here. On the, these accent lights are proposed along the east and west side of the buildings. And if you look on the pictures of comparable Taco Bells that we looked at a minute ago, these lights shine both up and down. What Mr., excuse me, Mr. Iverson pointed out was that these accent lights, via this note right here, are proposed to be capped. So they're only going to shine up, which settles the question of whether or not the Planning Commission wants to allow access lighting that shines up. Typically, the Township would only allow lighting that shines down. We don't want to shine light up into the sky if we can help it.
So they're all only going to shine down?
I would want to verify that with the applicant, but that's my understanding.
That's correct, they're all going to shine down.
You just said only going to shine up.
Excuse me? No, they're only going to shine down and not shine up. So in other words, they are, where you see these, what's proposed for this Taco Bell in Heartland, these lights would only shine down, they wouldn't do this uplighting as well.
Are those the fixtures that's driving up to the 15? Is that what's causing that?
I don't believe so. There's lighting specifically on the east side of the building for the drive-through operation. Correct me if.
It does, I mean, it's the highest level is right in front of those, but there's some other lighting, too, so it adds to it.
Well, I was just going to say, we just, in the last couple of years, have done two drive-throughs with Tim Hortons and with McDonald's, and we didn't have this lighting issue. We managed to stay in line. So I'm wondering if it's just a matter of number of fixtures or lotage of fixtures, or what's causing it to be 15 versus a limited amount?
If I could make a comment?
Sure.
In my, in my response to David's review, I have a statement that the PD agreement basically said that the zoning ordinance in effect at the time of the agreement, the PD agreement, so March 28th, 2008, there's a zoning ordinance to be looked at for all the future development. So we designed it in accordance with that statement, because it was in the PD agreement. In the 2008 ordinance, the limit along the property line and the maximum limit don't exist. So we, I didn't look at the current, so, no. That being said, we believe that the lighting levels are good, but if you object to them, we will lower them.
I think we may have something in the PD that states the maximum lighting levels on fronts of stores and out in parking lots and.
I hunted for it and didn't find it, but I was going to swear it's not there.
I just remember having the conversations with both the north and the south development at the time. My only comment would be, is if we've just done a Hortons and a McDonald's under the new ordinance, and we didn't have the issue, what lighting differences could they possibly be using that this maybe couldn't comply to that?
Without the benefit of going back and looking at the Tim Hortons and the McDonald's photometric plans to confirm that they didn't get over the 10-foot candles, and let's assume that they didn't, I also would want to confirm what Mr. Iverson is saying, that the zoning ordinance that was in effect in 2008 didn't have these maximums in place.
Sounds odd to me, because I don't even remember touching that part of the ordinance in revisions.
What you will see on this is that those maximums, and I don't know if you're going to be able to see this as we zoom in, well, the 15.5, it's right at the window, and that's in excess of, obviously, 15.5 is in excess of 10. And then at this second window, it gets up to 12.8. So it is something of a concentrated excess of the maximum, right at the windows, as opposed to being spread across.
If I could make a comment, neither, those are the light fixtures, the little round things are the light fixtures that are, those are not the windows. The window is about where the 2.6 is, right where your cursor, that's about where the window is, where your cursor was, at a 2.6.
So are the round dots the fixtures?
Those are the, yeah, those are the wall-mounted fixtures, yes. So just.
It's on the west side, too.
Pardon?
On the west side as well.
Yeah, now that.
Now that you've looked, there's a 14.
Yep. Some of those are harder to see, because they're right on top of that black line, but we got a 14.8 and a 10.2.
Those values are calculated that are shining down only?
Yes.
And one more issue on lighting, and part of it's a clarification. What Mr. Iverson provided in his packet this evening addresses the issue of the pole lights that are proposed for the Taco Bell. The development agreement calls for a black shoebox-style fixture, and what the applicant is proposing is an LED fixture that isn't of the shoebox style, and they recognize that. But it is an LED-style light, and, again, Mr. Iverson, correct me if I'm wrong, but based on the conversation we had, it's not feasible to do an LED-style light within that shoebox fixture? Is that accurate?
That's my understanding, yes.
So what they're proposing then is this style of light, and there's some better pictures of what that looks like within the packet that Mr. Iverson provided this evening. I can predict perhaps some reservations that we do want to see consistent lighting across all of this Plan Development, that we don't want necessarily to see each site have their own distinct style of parking lot lighting, that there isn't the intent to see some consistency.
Well, I think that's part of the portion of having a plan, is where there's consistency across. I struggle with it a little bit, because I know the LED is the way things are going. We are at our office right now, actually this week, changing our fixtures over to LED. So there are conversion kits that can be done to shoebox lighting. I don't know if it's the right way or the wrong way to do it, but it's being done right now, and we're doing it for the energy consumption, because it's so much less. I struggled when I read this, because it's like, I get the LED concept, I think it's all going to go that way, but how do we deal with a development where we've got, you know, every place is going to have a different light fixture in it now?
This issue required some clarification between Mr. Iverson and myself on my part. When I saw that this was labeled as a street light, I thought that this was a detail of just that, the street light, and I missed the fact that this is what they were proposing within the parking lot. I assumed that they were going to go with something similar to the shoebox style, and that the details of that light weren't shown on the lighting plan. So this is what they're proposing.
So I know the schools just converted all of their lights in their, if you, anybody anybody happen to know what their fixtures look like?
I do not.
Um, I might make a, I'm not sure if the lights that they converted were all interior or interior and exterior, there's a difference in fixtures. I just, um, I'm not, you know, I don't know the context of those changes. I know if you look at the pictures that I have supplied, these were just taken today at the Romulus store, so that's what we had at Romulus, did the first two pictures. So there's one on the pole, and then the one up in the air. And they certainly look different than a shoebox, you know, we can't deny that. LED lighting is, it's the way of the future. I mean, it's very green, and I understand your reservation, it looks different than a shoebox. We will do, we will do what you ask us to do.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt, but I think the reason we went with shoebox, so we don't have an exposed bulb, right?
Correct.
So you don't see that. I'm just trying to, I don't think I've ever seen these at night, so I'm wondering how that looks, you know?
This is a full cutoff fixture.
Yeah.
It meets the exact, it meets the exact same, it meets the exact same standard.
We converted.
Right.
I, I, again, I struggle with it. I don't know if Ramco would ever consider changing the pattern book and requiring a different type of light fixture. If that's the way the world's going, then Myers is going to be the odd man out. But I just think it would be, I think light poles in parking lots are very noticeable, and I just think we are making a mistake to run through and have, we'll end up with 10 different light fixtures in there. And it's a project, it's got a pattern book, it's got a theme, but I'm not sure, I think what we currently have in the pattern book in the end is going to be ultimately what the market's going to want.
I don't understand why you wouldn't be able to find an LED fixture that's shielded.
Well, we...
It's not the, you know, this, we don't care what kind of light is inside of the shoebox.
No.
We just want it to be shielded, and, you know, a certain, there's a standard on the foot count, the illumination, so I don't understand why you can't find one that's shielded.
Well, our fixtures are fairly old, and we looked at changing them to the LED, and what we did was, we ended up changing the bulb, because the fixture itself, to go to the whole LED fixture, was really pricey, and we wanted to have the energy savings. So there's a company right here, actually, in Labonia, I think, that sells it. So that's the one I know we're using, there may be others. But I, but I think that it's a, it's an element that should not change from lot to lot, as much as I think the LED is the way to go.
Well, we're not saying it can't be LED, we're just saying it needs to be shielded.
Okay, it needs to be the shoebox style type light.
And what it is, so it basically needs to be in a shoebox, not, because shield, this is a shielded fixture.
Right, it needs to be the...
It just meets the...
We've got a fixture spec in the, in the project.
Yes, I know.
So maybe you could take that fixture and...
I know exactly what you're talking about, and this is what we want to use, and so that we had to ask for it, so...
Yeah, I don't think I can personally support this, even though I understand the reason that you're proposing it.
Yeah, well, we will, we will do, of course, what you ask.
Yeah.
I agree, we brought into a theme, into a concept, and everybody liked the look. And if you start making changes, especially if we're forced now to go to different fixtures for each parking lot, it's not the theme we brought into.
Right.
Okay.
And I work on a lot of downtown projects where they also are converting, and they're able to use their existing, let's call it housing, and switch out bulbs, and doing, and I know it's changing so fast, so I feel really there probably is something that more closely matches with the LED. But I too feel we got to look at the look and the shoebox the way it is now, and kind of stick with that, because I have seen these fixtures, a good example is off of 23, there's a park and ride in Ann Arbor. I mean, they're beautiful, but they're a whole different, a whole different look, and they really stand out.
Yeah, I imagine I haven't seen them there.
Yes, you, yeah, right?
Plymouth Road there?
Yes. Yep.
So why don't we take a look at this? We had a couple of lighting, and on Dave's review letter here, we had, number three was determined by the planning commission whether the illumination levels as proposed are acceptable, particularly at the shared commercial property lines. Are you okay with the proposal that we're not going to drop to one at the property lines?
I am.
I'm comfortable with the property line, yes.
Okay, so we're okay with that. Number four, determined by the planning commission of whether the wall-mounted accent lights, which now are directed downward, are acceptable, so I guess they're directed downward.
That was kind of a not, that was kind of a down, not issue now, after a clarification.
Yep, a non-issue, right. So five, inclusion of the manufacturer's cut sheet for the shoebox style, we just talked about that.
And if I could make a comment on that?
Sure.
Just so you know, when we change the fixture, the photometric plan will change, and what we will do is, we won't go any higher than what the existing plan is for the foot candles, so there'll be that or less.
Okay.
New fixtures.
That's good.
Well, I don't know where, in these bullet points, it talks about it, it doesn't really clarify it, but I'm not sure that I'm supportive of the exceeding the 10-foot candles along those sides of the buildings, so...
That, that would be part of the discussion, summarize in number three.
Okay, yeah, those, I read that as the property line, but okay.
So, based on the photometric plan, you've got at least one, two, three spots, anywhere you've got these wall-mounted accent lights, where the lighting level gets above 10, and then, I see two more here.
Can you drop a slightly lesser wattage bulb in there? And that kind of...
When we, when we change the, when we change out the other fixtures, we'll take a look at the whole site. As I say, I was looking at the 08 ordinance, I scanned it and scanned it, but I know I'm not perfect, I could have missed it, but I, there was no, neither one of those, and I went back through after David's, I, no, I got everything, every point, and then I went back through it, and, yeah, I thought, did I miss it? Where is it? I didn't find it, so, um, we can reduce those.
Okay. So we'll put those not exceed the 10. Um, let's see here, item six is inclusion of foundation landscaping along the building's south or front side. Dave?
So, let me get back to the landscape plan. So the, uh, the pattern book does call for, uh, foundation landscaping along the building. I think we can understand that it's, having landscaping along the drive-through side likely isn't feasible, and given the constraints of the site, and having to maintain 24 feet of drive aisle width here, and the width of the parking spaces, and the width of the sidewalk, having to maintain all of those requirements, it doesn't leave much if any room for foundation landscaping along the east side of the building, where the recommendation of the planning department was, is get the, where there is room is along the north side of the building, which is the front and perhaps the most prominent side of the building, get some foundation landscaping along the nor, uh, excuse me, the south side of the building.
I have a comment, that I think we could get the foundation planting even along the west a little bit. I would leave the sidewalks all alone, but I, I believe we could probably, and leave the sidewalk on the south side alone. I think you could come in here and do it between the lawn and the sidewalk here, and I think you could bring it up here, and it would have the effect of being foundation planning.
That's right.
Even though you have the sidewalk against the building, I wouldn't mess with the sidewalk. I think this whole area landscaping-wise is weak.
That was where I was going to go.
At, at best, it has one tree in it and some daylilies.
Right.
So this is pretty hard and harsh, and I think since we have the requirement of foundation planting, it would be easy to include it here and there, and accomplish the look.
We can add that.
So, I'm looking at the nice drawing you gave me today, I'm glad you brought along with you the landscape plan, the conceptual showing of Outlet, we got the red circles on it. And the landscaping plan there gives me a different feeling than this landscape plan here. Now, I know some of that is because this shows things that'll happen out, over on this lot, and things that'll happen over on this lot. Because of the reconfiguration of this, we've lost a big chunk of landscaping that was on that previous corner, and, um, so, I don't know, there's really much that we can do there. I mean, maybe a tree could be added in there, similar, I don't, but I don't know if that would cause some problems for a site on this next, wherever the next driveway's going to be. I, I myself would like to see these be something other than daylilies, because in the winter, they're going to just be gone, and the same thing here. I mean, I guess if these stay daylilies, that's okay, but I, I think I'd like to see a shrub used here, rather than daylily that's gone half the year. And when you're adding these shrubs in here for foundation, I think possibly an ornamental tree here would, uh, would improve it. And I'm assuming that the plantings around the sign are consistent with what's been done elsewhere and...
There's a detail in the pattern book, and it's in accordance with that detail. I'm not sure what else has been done, but if I could make a comment, if you look at that landscape plan that was approved, and look at the quantities of, um, of plantings that they have for Outlet number nine, we're pretty close to the same number of plantings that they were, and, you know, so we calculated everything the same way, I mean, we're, we're very close. And so I would just say that our landscape plan and the one that's in here, I mean, yeah, the things are put in a little different area, but they didn't have the daylilies around, you know, the, the speaker and the, and the menu board, they didn't show the menu board at all.
Right.
And so, I'm just saying, we added all that stuff, it's not, you know, so we, we have more when you count that type of stuff than what this plan had, and then everything that this plan showed, it's just moved into a different place maybe, but it's all there.
That could be very true, I wouldn't argue that point. I think the plan out of the, out of the, the pattern book does not get into detail of, like, foundation plantings and that, because you'll notice there's none on anything, and I, I think, I think that would be where I would say that portion of it might be missing.
Right, and we will, we will, we have agreed to add that, we will, no problem to add that foundation landscaping, it's no, no problem. And I like your idea of where to add it as well. I do, I know, since we're talking about landscaping, I guess you're going to talk about, I wanted to talk about the dumpster screening and the hedge row, but maybe David needs to speak to that first, so...
Yep, we can, we can add that right now if you'd like, because that's item seven, which is the hedge row required along Heartland Square Drive, so if you'd like to bring that up, that would be fine.
All right, well, um, what we, we consider the landscaping right around here as the hedge row for the road. There's, it's a double stack with the arbor viti and the boxwoods there. The, if you look at the calculation on this plan, we calculated it the same way, it's just, we couldn't, our driveway's so wide, we couldn't get it all across there. And if you look at the detailed sheet, that detailed sheet in your packet that I handed you out, you can see that the dump, I have all the dumpsters circled, none of them have screening around them. Now, some of them are near some trees, but there's no screening in any of them. And so my feeling is, you know, when we prepared the plan, is that that, and I know the pattern book and the ordinance will say that the dumpster screening will be screened in accordance with the planning commission's requirements, and that's all it says. So I know that it says that, and, but I've, this is, we base it based on this.
Certainly understand, again, I'll come back and say it doesn't show the foundation planting on the building, I think it just didn't get to that nth detail.
All right, we're willing to add that.
Sure.
But I believe if you look at this plan, and you look at, there's a large labona landscaping right there, you have a large labona landscaping right there, there's very light landscaping over here, we have light landscaping, other than, you know, the same amount of landscaping over there. And so I believe that we meet the letter of the PD with that landscaping, I believe we meet the spirit of it.
I'll make the comment that I think the hedge row on the other side of the driveway could be a problem for reviewing the sign, if I understand the location of where the hedge row is supposed to go, so I'm not sure that I would think that the hedge row would be a good idea there.
I'm just going to comment, you know, there you've spent all this money on this brick enclosure around your dumpster, so the brick enclosure should be somewhat attractive, and yet we're, you have that arbor viti hedge that's five foot tall next to a six-foot brick wall. So in my opinion, that's really not needed, that arbor viti layer. I mean, sure, you could stay with your u's and your boxwood that are lower, but I find that a brick enclosure is okay to look at, you know, why are we then having two layers, you know, of evergreens around it? I would rather see, you know, eliminate those arbor viti, keep the lower, the boxwood u's around it, but then when we go across the drive, as you're suggesting, near the sign, place between the sign and the parking lot curb, put that low hedge behind it, so it backdrops the sign, so it's on the driveway side. And then you create an entrance coming through, and you have less view of the parking lot, because it's low, you can still see over it, but you provide this hedge row, and you don't have to spend the money on your arbor viti, because I don't really see what that's doing. I mean, you've already done a nice brick wall, now you've also put some landscape around it at a lower level, three foot tall, but why have three foot, five foot, and then six foot wall? I don't, I don't know what we gained from that, as a comment.
And we certainly can do, there is some room that wouldn't block the sign.
Right in there. Yeah, right back there, I think we could get more.
You can't get too close to those electrical cabinets, but we could get as close to those as we could, and we could put some over there. And the re, the pattern book calls for that hedge row, but it's, it's part of the calculation of the road frontage landscaping.
Right.
And so it's, it gets calculated there, and then it's supposed to be placed along the road, so we, we tried to kind of match the pattern here, but it's, what you're suggesting would work well.
That's good, that's a good comment. What do you think, Eric?
Is that clear?
I'm okay with that, I'd still like to get some, something that's not going to die off in the winter around that lower portion.
Well, here, take the arbor viti out, have the small little hedge that you just talked about across the driveway, and let's fix up that south-end grassy area that we talked about with the, we'll call it foundation planting along the sidewalk.
Right.
You could add the small ornamental tree, I agree, that would probably break that wall up a little bit there. And then, I do, I, I believe that I totally support the comment on the daylilies, can we get those daylilies substituted around the menu board? You've got to admit...
That's what we use at all of our stores in those areas, because it's not mandated in the ordinance, and it's what, it's what Sundance likes to put there, and they put them in all their stores.
Yeah, it looks like a brick base, is that what that is? Like a brick baver base type around it?
Yes, a pad, yes. It's a stamped concrete.
And it'd be easy to carry a small boxwood hedge around it.
Right. We'll kind of have to tie in when we do the lands, when you do the landscaping around the walk, so you have to kind of like put it together, you know, your idea of having the landscape outside of the walk, that'll kind of come into play with where that is around.
We'll put boxwoods around it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I, I have just a couple other comments.
On landscaping?
Yep.
Okay.
So on your east property line, between your drive-through and the property line, you've got the spruce trees there, and I see that follows, you know, the master plan, but because you're keeping them all on your side between your property line and the curb, there's really not the room for the spruce trees, because the spruce trees get to, up to 20 feet wide, and right now, if I measured it correctly, you have about 11 and 1/2 feet between the back of the curb, so they're going to start to grow over your driveway, and you're going to start to shear them. So I just recommend that, I hope that, you know, a future development will kind of mirror that idea on the other side, but I think you're going to need to scoot your trees over or something. On the other side, but I think you're going to need to scoot your trees over or something, because eventually, what's going to happen, if you put them right where you want them, in about five years, they're going to start to, we're going to have to start to limb them up. It was just a comment. There's just not enough room for them, how they're placed. Maybe you can scoot them closer to the property line, because I think that's nice. Evergreen is good. You need some views for security, but again, you're going to be having to shave the side if you place them where they're at.
We can move those closer. We just centered them in the landscaping area. So we can move those closer to the property line. I don't know if there's a minimum distance. I know, they had them planted right on the property line, but that doesn't work, because they'll get damaged when the other site gets... So we got that conundrum of not wanting them too close to the property line to get damaged when that site gets constructed.
Yeah.
So, you know, but we will move them a couple feet away, you know, towards the property line. You know, maybe half the distance of where they are now.
Okay. And then just, one final thing is, I just, I'm a landscape architect, so of course, I look at all... But on your plant list, you've got your blue chip juniper, and those are the ones around your sign. You've got them at a 24-inch height. Just edit that, because they don't grow that tall, so you won't be able to purchase them.
It's probably an error in the note.
Probably you wanted a spread, just a comment.
Yeah, it's an error in the note, sorry. And just a comment, since we're talking about boxwoods, that's not on the approved species list. Honestly, I wanted to bring that up.
Well, you brought them up around the dumpster, so...
We had, we have, we put landscaping varieties on the site that we prefer, that Sundance prefers. I just want to make a note that all the varieties we put on there are suggested species in the township ordinance, except for the, oh, let me get it here. Except for the Greenspire Linden is the only one that didn't show up on the list. And so, since we're talking about landscaping, we talked about, put boxwoods here. Boxwoods have to get approved by you also, because it's outside of the pattern book. So I guess what we're, we need to bring up, the species of the plantings. And as I say, all of our species are in the recommended list, except for the Greenspire Linden. And we believe that that's...
Yeah, what is the comment on that? You're proposing some species that are not within the Heartland Town Square development, but they are on the township's approved list? That's what's going on there? And you like those species because...
That is what the owner prefers.
Okay.
And they do, you know, they do up to five restaurants a year with new landscaping, and that's the plants, the species that they prefer.
Sue, is there a big difference in these species that they're requesting versus what's being...
Really, I don't think so. I think they're all hardy, that's number one. Are they going to live? You know, they are. I mean, so I don't really know how to rule on it. There's a pattern book, and we go by, just kind of like our light fixtures. If they had come through and said, hey, here's a look to unify the site, I mean, that would be the only reason, right? Because they are, you know, the Linden tree that you said, I mean, that's tolerant. That's a great street tree, the boxwood. So I guess it's more about, you know, how we want to respect what was approved with the pattern book, and having this unified look.
And if I could make a comment, you know, Ramco did approve this site plan and landscape plan. So, I mean, so they believe that it, that we meet the intent, maybe not the letter, but the intent.
Comments on plant material?
I mean, they're not going to look really significantly different. You know, when you look at the list, like, you've got the, there's maples that are on the list and the Linden. Maples in the fall are going to color more than the Linden, be a different color. But the rest of the time of the year, we're looking at green leaves and green leaves, so it just depends how picky we want to be.
So, I guess my question would most be about this area here, if we're going to let them use boxwoods here. I mean, there's shrubbery planned throughout this whole development along the roadside. And I guess I am concerned about the consistency of it. So if they put these here, somebody else puts yews over here, and then, you know, something else, the next one. I mean, it seems like we wanted that consistency in there. And meanwhile, these individual things, I guess, if you're, I mean, I'm not a landscape architect, so blue spruce, you know, other spruce, I don't have much. If they're hardy, I don't have, but this element here kind of more concerns me consistency-wise.
I agree with that. I mean, it's kind of a frontage, right? It's along a road. You're trying to unify your roads. Typical roads have the same street trees, the same kind of furnished plants, just again, to dye the development together.
And we can make those yews, I mean, and that's...
That's what it is elsewhere. I don't have the whole pattern book. But that probably makes more sense, when you think of it. I mean, internally in the site, their particular desire, maybe that makes more sense where they could deviate. But at least on frontages, where it's the whole, that's where you would see it.
Well, just to make sure I understand, the boxwoods would be fine, you know, on the foundation landscaping point, where it's inside of our site, but along the public roadway or that private road, the access point, we would go with the pattern book species.
Seems right.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
All right. We will, we can revise that.
Okay. So let's see, we've covered six with the inclusion of foundation planting. We've talked about the hedge row along Heartland Square Drive. Whether the landscaping is proposed satisfies the intent of the pattern book. And then we talked about landscaping, species proposed, are they acceptable? Is the Planning Commission agreeable to all of those that is discussed here tonight? All right, Item Nine would be determination by the Planning Commission of whether the underage of brick, minimum 40% required, 33% proposed, on the building's south elevation is acceptable, and within the spirit of the pattern book.
Dave, I'm sorry. So the, both the pattern book and the zoning ordinance require all frontages to have a minimum of 40% brick on the south elevation. They're, under that, at 33% brick, a big reason why is because they're proposing this stone kind of pillar monument feature on this corner. That feature comprises 23%, so they do note on their plan that combined, those are 56% of the total frontage area for the south elevation. The Planning Commission does have the authority to waive the minimum architectural requirements, so long as they feel a compelling case to do so has been made.
And the stone is part of the corporate building?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, any comments?
I think the stone is a nice feature. I think it's fine.
And if I could just make a general comment, too. In my letter that I wrote, if you take, add up all the brick on the whole building, around the whole building, it's comprised of 72% brick. So we're not trying to skate out on brick. It just happens to be, it is slightly a lower requirement on that elevation, but we believe it looks much better with the stone.
I think it looks nice, so we're okay with that. Item Ten is determination by the Planning Commission of whether the brick colors and styles proposed are acceptable and consistent with the spirit of the pattern book. What do you guys think?
There are sample boards provided by the applicant on the table. We can bring them up if you want to take a closer look. I think Mr. Iverson, or perhaps even Mr. Gallant, I could speak to what differences there may be between the actual brand and product identification number that were cited in the pattern book, how they are or not different from the bricks that are proposed for the Taco Bell.
I have one picture, eight and a half by 11 minutes color, of the brick that's in the pattern book. I can, it's in my file. I can pull it out and show it to you. I only have one copy. I could pass it over if you want to see it. If not, I mean, it's earth tone. It's different, but it's similar. And it's the same manufacturer, Glengarry manufactures this brick. And, you know, we believe that it meets the intent of the pattern book.
Any thoughts? I think the brick looks as proposed.
Good combination with color tone.
I think while we have continuity, I think we have continuity in building materials.
Yeah.
I think they have some colors that are very acceptable, the earth tone type colors.
Yeah. The big difference I would see is that that brick is not a uniform color throughout one brick, as these are. You know, these are same color, each brick is the same color. That isn't, I don't really have a problem.
Yeah, I think their style maybe is a little more contemporary looking or whatever, and I think that brick may suit itself better than a more, slightly more traditional looking brick. So I think you're okay with the brick?
Okay, great, thank you.
Let's see here, Item Eleven, determination by the Planning Commission on whether the illuminated lavender element on the south and west elevations is acceptable and consistent with the spirit of the pattern book. And this probably rolls right into 12 with your bronze slat system. So Dave, you've got any comments first?
Just reiterating what's spelled out in our review letter, starting with lavender. So, behind the slat element on the west side of the building, and then also on the south front side of the building, behind it is the glazed masonry material that you see on the sample board there. Obviously, a lavender purplish color. In addition, on the backside of all these, or most of these slats, is an LED lighting element that lights the purple lavender, or the lavender glazed element, and then creates kind of a lavender glow look to it. That's, we already saw this before, but when it's illuminated at night, you get this kind of effect. Both the pattern book and the zoning ordinance are, seek to have the Planning Commission take a close look at what's termed as dissonant colors. And dissonant colors are colors such as a bright purple that could be perceived as being inconsistent with surrounding development and the development architectural standards that the township has in place. So it is up to the Planning Commission to make a determination of whether this illuminated lavender glow element is a dissonant color or whether it's more consistent with an accent color. And that's the charge of the Planning Commission to make that determination. Anything to add?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, David. If you would, we don't believe this is dissonant. And it's, I understand it's going to be, it's a personal preference. And so, but this is the, this is the standard that, you know, Sundance has chosen to go to, the Taco Bell nationally. So, now, you know, the lavender block is not a trademark. It is purely, you know, an architectural element to give character to the building. And we believe it does that without being offensive. If you look at the daytime photograph, you can see, you cannot see the lavender block. The slat shade, shade it, so you just, you can't even see that it's back there. Now, at nighttime, when the lighting, the backlighting is on, of course, you see, you see the lavender hue. And we believe that that's, gives a quite bit of character. That's very attractive, and that it's not dissonant. But I would like to, we had somebody drive through and take a couple of pictures, and they're in my packet here. And you can, you know, this is right across the street from McDonald's. This was just taken last night. And so, that's their front. You know, they have their gold architectural feature. Now, is yellow dissonant? I wouldn't, I don't think this is dissonant. But I think it's certainly bolder than what our look is. So, you know, as I say, I don't believe that's dissonant. This was constructed in 2010, maybe. I know it wasn't there in 2008. I looked on the Google Street View. It wasn't there in 2008. So that's one thing. Then we have, you know, the Burger King on the next page, and you've got, you know, red accent lighting across the top, of course, they're red. Now, I know that style, I don't know how old that facade is, if they've updated it recently, but it's still there, you know, right across the street. And then, you know, you have that, you know, the red, the red brick there. I think that's Wendy's, right there. Right, you know, so those three restaurants right across the street. Are those, you know, mute colors and so forth? No, but they're not, I don't believe that they're dissonant either. They're standards of those companies. They're not trademarks of the company. And it's what businesses want to be unique. And this is a very, we believe, a very attractive architectural feature that makes us unique.
Does your lighting plan include that lighting?
It's supposed to. I didn't do the photometric. I would have to ask the person that did that.
And the proposal for Heartland, this purple accent feature is half the size. It's not going up the entire building.
That is, that's correct. If you look right here.
Or two-thirds, whatever, something less than full height.
What do you suspect the difference is between the two pictures, nighttime pictures? Because I can agree that the top one is a non-offensive lavender hue. But the one below, that looks more blue than lavender, but I'll say maybe that's lavender. I'm kind of concerned, the amount of light coming out of that one doesn't really look like a hue to me.
I'm not quite sure. The bottom one was probably taken by me, and the top one was taken by somebody else, because I'm not a good photographer. But I'm not sure if it just has to do with the settings on the camera that was used. And that's what I suspect it is, but I don't know that.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with you, because how bleached out the Taco Bell sign is, the bell is. So it kind of looks like it's overexposed.
Yes, that's what it looks like to me, is overexposure. My daughter is a photographer. I never showed it to her, but I could ask her.
I have a comment, but you're right. I was looking to see at the photometric plan that's in the package, to see what the photometrics were around that. And actually, we overlooked it, but on the north side, and then on the west side, it is above 10 due to that lighting as well. So I don't know if we want to address that. But if we look back on the photometric, where that standing is, we are above a 10, which we earlier talked about. Look on the north, you'll see the 12.3.
The slat wall is...
Yeah.
And that's kind of that, then.
Isn't it right there?
No, it's on the south end, on the west.
Oh, am I on the side? I'm so sorry.
Those numbers are very low.
Okay, sorry about that. So I'm not sure why it is 12.3 up on that other end. Not interesting.
There's a light fixture right there.
Must be, yeah. Because I started to look at that, wondering if it was that. Okay, well, that's good.
Anybody have a comment? I have one, but I can wait.
Well, I do like the one picture over the other. And I like the fact that we have less of that material on this proposed Taco Bell. The daytime example of it is, I like. I did have a question, how much space between the slats are we talking about?
It's about two inches.
Generally, I think it's a nice architectural element. I've seen it on other buildings, and I think it's pretty attractive. And I like the idea of backlighting it, too. But I'm a little concerned about what potential other uses there are for LED lighting. You know, if we allow this, because... other uses there are for LED lighting, you know, if we allow this, because we're very concerned about, you know, flashy lights on our buildings, and we don't like to allow neon, for example, for that very same reason. So, you know, that top picture there, and if you take the height of those slats, and you're gonna compress it even more on the proposed building, I think it'll be fine. But, you know, we need to really be concerned about, okay, if we're gonna allow this, are we gonna allow changing colors, are we gonna, you know, can you change it for the holiday season, can you, you know, can you start making, you know, begin to change like on a regular basis so that it's eye-catching and all that?
And just to make a comment, this is, this is never gonna change because it's white light, purple block, and so.
For your, for this particular proposal, but I'm just talking for future benefit if we allow it to, you know, we've gotta be very careful about how far we let, you know, how far we let this kind of design element go, because we could simply wrap the whole building in LED lights and, you know, change its look, you know, at any time or so.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Jeff. I mean, we've, we've toe'd a pretty hard line on these types of elements, and I do see this as kind of a change to our philosophy. But like I say, if it's the one up above versus the one down below, I don't know how to ensure that is the case.
Yeah, I just, I just would like some reassurance that those lights were taken into account for the, on the photometric plan.
Yeah, I will have to confirm that, and I can confirm that with David, I've gotta talk to the lighting.
How soon is that Romulus Stores slat wall gonna be installed?
They're being installed now. There was a delay in getting the slat wall, and I was out there this morning, it was afternoon, and the light is, our slat wall's gonna be, I should've gone and seen it, or taken a picture of the LED light, just the oval shape, it's three little, three balls in each one, and they're spaced out probably, I'm gonna say maybe a foot, 10, 12 inches apart on the top, the top slat, and basically the bottom, so. And that's what, that's what was showing up against the light wall. So it just, they're very small, you wouldn't get it, you know. How's this gonna light this thing? You know, we're used to seeing fluorescent, even with fluorescent bulbs, you know, to give the same type of, same type of effect. But that should be, hopefully it's gonna be completely white satin.
With the lighting working as well?
That's next month.
Well, I'd be willing to take a look at it.
How is, how much, what difference of size of material on the rim of this building as opposed to this one? It'll be about the same amount?
It says the same amount.
I like the architectural feature of it, I have the same concerns on the lighting. I don't have a problem with the purple and can look at it and say, well, I do think it's dissonant, but I also look around and say, we've allowed a dissonant color to be used as an accent feature at an entry or something on other facilities. You know, the big boy has the red checkerboard over the door, the McDonald's has the upside down french fry. I think a little color is, is good. It can be, it can be good-looking when it doesn't have color on it, but it can also be boring. So I don't think the element itself and purple causes me the problem as much as making sure that it doesn't become the lighting of the whole parking lot or the washing the building with an excessive amount of it. I don't know how to get over that hump on that here this evening, but that's where I would be with it. I could support it if it's toned down as it's shown up on the top picture.
And that is our understanding of how it's gonna look. What we can do is, once Romulus is up and around, and get some pictures and bring them to you, we can't do that tonight, unfortunately. We really were disappointed when we found out that wouldn't happen.
Right. Is the intensity of the LED lighting adjustable once it's installed?
You know, I don't know, they, they have power supply, and I don't know if you can verify that, fully showing you.
Yeah, I think you have to, they have dimmable LED lighting, but they have to be specifically dimmable LED lights that are put in, and I would suspect that they're not, and that's not, you know, what would be specified on it typically, because the expense of the dimmables are extremely high.
Dave, if we have them verify that that element is part of the lighting plan, it's been incorporated, and the numbers on the pages are the same when it's lit, do you believe that that will calm our uneasiness between one and two, our top and bottom photo?
Well, the photometric plan shows what the light level is five feet off the ground. And the way that's set up, I don't know that it's intended to direct a lot of light down. So I think that the difference between the top and the bottom on a photometric plan may not be significant because I don't know how much of that light coming from those LEDs is making it to five feet above the ground. So you may have a photometric plan that shows the same thing, but you may have brighter lights coming from one than the other. I do think, I'm not, I'm by no means a photography expert either, but there is something to be said for how washed out that one image is. I get the impression from the applicant that their intent isn't for it to have that look either.
My bet is it's gonna be somewhere in between the two of those, because the top one looks underexposed, because if, I can't believe that they want the exterior of their building to be so dim. I'd be concerned about, you know, people's safety around the outside, it's so dark.
You know, these pictures have been cut and paste a couple times admittedly, so what they really look like.
Yeah, and I think your site lighting is gonna impact it as well. My suspicion is the brighter your site lighting is, the more washed out that color will be. I mean, it's a guess, but that's my belief. And so it's gonna all depend on the, and every site is different because you don't have, you know, the site lights aren't located in the exact same place. You might have LED lighting on one site and metal halide on the other, and it's all a variable. But, you know, we, our understanding is that the upper photograph is the, is the standard, is the one that, I believe, so when you saw, Rick, that Sundance saw that they liked that one, right? The upper photograph?
Yes, well, that's London.
They say it's gonna look like.
It's perfect.
And you're not getting a lot of pushback on it, other than the concern of what the final product is. I don't know the timeline that we're working in, I know time is money, but I also know we got a couple of weeks of a holiday here. And if that's gonna be lit within the next week or week and a half, do we have the opportunity to have you get that lit? This is a new concept for us, you're totally not sure what you're selling, we're not sure what we're buying, and this is a permanent fixture in the community, and it does have ramifications, as Jeff pointed, into the future. Can we take the opportunity to bring this back at our next meeting? In the meantime, we'll take a look at it, because it will be turned on, and we'll know what we're agreeing to.
It's in two weeks, right, or three?
Dave, is our next meeting two weeks, or?
It's scheduled for January 9. So now I'm going back, packets would need to go out January 2, if there is gonna be revised packet materials, and we do have, you know, everyone's out next week, and then a short week the week after. But having said all that, I don't want it to be me who doesn't make it happen. If the planning commission and the applicant are willing to, you know, do the legwork on their end, we'll make it happen.
I just, I'm, I, nobody here is really comfortable with what it is, other than we have two pictures that are showing it two different ways. I think if it turns out looking more like the top, you're probably gonna be all right with it. If it looks like the bottom, we'll probably be having more discussion.
That would give us the opportunity to clean up kind of a final review, we're not sending something to the board that has 13 items that, you know.
Would you be looking for them to be coming back on the 9th with the revised landscape plan, revised photometric?
I don't know if that's possible, but, I mean, your letter could reflect that they've addressed, I mean, either our agreement to these issues or whatever, would be a lot shorter list.
I believe that we should be able to turn that around. When do you need that by, David? Is it the, did you say the 2nd?
The packets need to be out the door to these folks by the 2nd, a week prior to the meeting. The 2nd is a Thursday, New Year's Day is the Wednesday, you know, really that week that we come back from, really, I would hope to see something from you December 30th, December 31st.
We can, we can make it happen that you would get it, you know, before, you know, before the 1st, I mean, on the 31st at the latest, and hopefully, I'm hoping to get it done even by Friday next week, so a week from, you know, I believe we might be able to get it taken care of.
And Dave, we're reviewing the same thing, and we've discussed a lot of this, so it would be fresh in our minds. So I'm, I'm wondering if the commission would be okay if our packets weren't available till the Monday before the meeting? That would allow Dave a few extra days if that, if that would help schedule.
Good point.
I can certainly see helping me and the applicant, and I guess I need to stress, this is all based on the presumption that the Romulus store is gonna be lit, but properly within the store.
Well, we're gonna hope it is.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping next, beginning of the week, to have it lit, so they know they're, they're hanging it on, and the sign, I'm going to try some kind of hotel, and just a few more times they hang it, we should be ready to go.
Maybe you could ride him a little hard for us. You could ride him a little harder for all of us, so he gets it done.
He'll be on the phone tomorrow morning.
And if we let Dave know it is, then he can shoot the email.
Thanks, Larry, did you go down there?
I did.
Oh, you went down?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we got open, we got centered here next year.
Okay.
Without the slat.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's open and operational?
That's what you're saying, it's open now? Yeah. Okay, well, that was 11, did that take, and I guess, is the planning commission of the opinion that this slat wall is an architectural feature and not a sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're good there?
Thank you.
Yep. DPW, fire marshal, and?
The only thing that, I mean, the sign in general, I'm kinda surprised that there's nothing that Dave's. How's that for a house do ya?
I think that's why it's not there.
I, I wouldn't say it's not there, I feel, you know, I did call out that.
Administrative.
Signs will be a separate permit, reviewed administratively, and we'll get it right.
Okay.
Give little faith.
No, it's just a new process. Dave, can you point out anything specific on DPW director, fire marshal, or township engineer letter that needs to be?
Only to say that the fire marshal wanted to see a fire hydrant shown on the site plan, and the engineer did come back in short order saying, and I realize now this has turned sideways, but the fire hydrant shall be here, and once the fire marshal saw that, then he, is, is okay.
We'll place that on the revised plan.
Yeah, as long as they show it on their construction plans. Engineer also had some, some issues with the, with some drainage things, but nothing that they felt wouldn't get worked out at the construction plan review.
I had a question.
Sure.
This is a first opportunity that Mike's had to use his new roof access request. Were you familiar with it, and are you in favor of it?
I'm the site engineer, I'm not the architect, and so, you know, the architect is certainly familiar with it, but he said this was the first time any community's required it, so.
Did he make any comment about, he hasn't had enough experience with it probably?
He just said this is the first community that required it, I mean, so.
Okay, Dave, have we covered what you are advising us to cover this evening?
We certainly covered it. Is it's, you are or you are not expecting to see, for example, the revisions to the landscaping and the lighting plan at the January 9 meeting, if Eric says he can make it happen? Or is it, is it just a matter of coming back and discussing specifically the illumination of the glazed lavender, having seen the Romulus store in person?
Well, my thought would be if the revisions could be done, and it can get to us by Monday, the, that would be the 6th, the 6th of January, that certainly would send a nice package to the board without 13 items listed there, if that's got the possibility of happening. We realize we got holidays in there, and people are, have commitments, personal commitment.
So the expectation is to see a revised packet, you're gonna say the 6th, for a meeting on the 9th? So then, you and I need to coordinate a little bit, because I need some lead time to look through it and send out a revised review letter.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm confident we should be able to get it there by the 31st. I'm gonna hope to get it there by a week from tomorrow, is maybe my, so I'm gonna try to get it there next week, so, you know, we do have a lot of.
If you show up, touch the wall a week from tomorrow, you're gonna find an empty building. I just saved you a trip.
Is that gonna allow you enough time to review the lighting?
We should be, we should be able to get that redone right.
With the new light, the light fixtures that we talked about?
Yeah, we should be able to get that, no problem.
And if Mr. Iverson does run into a snag with say his lighting guy or his landscaping guy, at least there is an agreement of what they intend to do and what they're expected to do.
Yep, we'll just try and wrap it up as much as we can. We're all, I think, kinda hoping that the lighting on the slat, the purple, looks like the top photo, so that it's really just a nice discussion and we can move on. You can move on. Does that work for you?
It works for me, we, the, if it works for Mr. Iverson and his group, it'll work for me.
Okay, well, I'll try our best. Any, anybody have any other questions or comments for them this evening? Not, we'll look to see you back here in a few weeks or so.
Okay.
All right.
Good to meet you all, thank you so much.
And thank you for coming. All right, Dave, I guess we're up to item 8B, zoning ordinance amendment application number 356.
So this will be round three of our three rounds of zoning ordinance amendments for 2013. Rounds one and two have been adopted by the township board, and round three had two trips to the ordinance review committee, one to discuss five of the nine, and the other to discuss the remaining four of the nine. Got a lot of great feedback from the members of the ordinance review committee, and we've incorporated their suggestions and comments. What you have before you is an overall cover memo, and then a individual cover memo for each of the nine proposed amendments. And then, following each of those individual cover memos, there is the red line, proposed changes to the existing ordinance language. What we're seeking at, at a minimum from the planning commission tonight, is for the planning commission to set a public hearing for these zoning ordinance amendments for the January 23, 2014 meeting. That's the closest meeting we could do and still meet the public noticing requirement.
That's the closest meeting we could do and still meet the public noticing requirements and get it in the newspaper. Now that we know with some degree of certainty that we're going to have a meeting on January 9, we could have discussion tonight. We could have discussion on January 9. And we certainly will have discussion during the public hearing on January 23, if the planning commission chooses to set the public hearing for that date. So I will leave it up to the members of the planning commission to decide how much discussion they want to have tonight versus January 9 versus January 23. Anybody have an opinion?
So far, do you have anything else for the 9th?
I, no. This, one of the things I was going to.
Because I think that's going to be quick on the 9th.
I'd agree.
I think we'd all like to get out of here towards the holiday.
Might be some other members here, too.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm not going to be on the, here on the 9th, just, you know, just so you know, but probably have others. I again have to travel, just letting you know.
Okay.
There is a, with, there is a, on page two of the overall cover memo, there is a suggested motion language if anyone were inclined to make a motion.
Okay.
Move to set a public hearing for January 23, 2014, discuss zoning ordinance amendment 76-4A through I, application number 356. Support that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hopkins, a second from Commissioner Voight. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close name, motion carries. Next up, item 9, call to the public. None. Item 10, planner's report. Dave?
So we will be having a meeting on January 9. The planner's report was going to say, I wasn't sure if we're going to have one, but now I'm sure that we are. We got a, I had to deliver this message last night to the ZBA. We, because of the way the holidays fell, we got an email from the finance department that the predians will not be going out at the end of December, but they'll be going out at the end of January for the planning commission members. So I'll use the same joke I used last night. If you're, you can use those predians for your Christmas shopping, you're going to have to wait until January, at which point you can use them to pay your, pay your bills.
Give us that back for Christmas, one second.
The, where's my, so a couple things to keep in mind for 2014. I won't, I won't go into a great deal of depth of them, but the township board is considering looking at the township's comprehensive plan in 2014. And what's under consideration now is whether that involves a new comprehensive plan or an update to the existing comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan was adopted in 2004 and amended in 2011. And so what the board is considering is whether to do another update or to look at perhaps a new comprehensive plan that may incorporate some other planning elements, including a parks and recreation master plan, or a pathways master plan, or a village subarea plan. Those are decisions that the board is working on as part of their overall strategic plan for 2014. In addition to things we have come down the road in 2014, the board does want the planning commission and the planning department and the ordinance review committee to look at the township's sign ordinance and consider some of the items that have come up within the sign ordinance, things, some of which you've already heard about in some of our discussions, taking a look at sign regulations within the village and whether the village might be a district that warrants having its own unique sign regulations perhaps. Another thing under consideration is, is looking at signage regulations for agritourism-type businesses, whether signs for things like cider mills and corn mazes and haunted forests and things like that. Seasonal-type recreation uses might have provisions separate from other uses. Perhaps looking at the sign allowances for home occupations. Those are the kind of things that the board wants us all to take a look at in the early part of 2014. More to come on that. And that is all I had on my list to cover on the planner's report this evening.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Committee reports, comments?
Any question for Dave, if that's all right?
Sure.
So when we started on this trek of handling 30 amendments this year, that wasn't the whole list from, I can't remember the name.
Urschler Royal.
Urschler Royal. Where do we sit with the balance of their punch list or whatever you call it?
So if memory serves, there was 48 items on that list. We took the, what, we as a staff and then brought to the planning commission what we considered to be the top 24, with six additions brought to us by staff. The discussions early this year were, are these the 24 that we want to tackle? And the answer was yes. Perhaps in our goal-setting, the planning commission for 2014, one of the discussions may be, do we want to take a look at the other 24? And are there some within that 24 or most or all that we want to go after in 2014? Or do we want to take a break from zoning ordinance amendments for the year?
We're on a roll.
You said that out loud, by the way.
I will say that if we are going to tackle the comprehensive plan, that may be a reason to see what comes out of that comprehensive plan and before we perhaps tackle zoning ordinance amendments. Because some of those future zoning ordinance amendments will be driven by what may or may come out of the outcome of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, to see what the 24 are that are left out remaining to see what the likelihood of that. I don't, not a big fan of stopping the progress of getting a thing all completed. So I'd like to see what the 24 remaining are.
I, if you want, that can be a.
If you can just send out the list again. I mean, if you, if that's a handy email or I can dig through.
No, I've certainly still got that memo. And I think what I could see us doing is circling the ones we've addressed or, I don't know, highlighting the ones we didn't or somehow indicating which ones we got and which ones we didn't. And maybe include that in the January 9 packet as a discussion item or?
Yeah, I'll leave that up for you and Larry to decide on the agenda.
Okay. Anything else? All right. If not, a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close name, motion carries. Thank you and good evening.